Okay ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. We will call tonight's meeting to a letter. So start time of the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberate and just as for all. Okay, what is item on tonight's agenda is the agenda and the meeting minutes from July 15th. If there are no, if there are no changes or amendments to tonight's agenda or last month's meeting minutes, I will pass for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as is and the meeting minutes from July 15th.
Jim and Regina, as a motion in the second, to approve the consent agenda at the meeting minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, carry your opinion. Uh, first item on tonight's agenda is citizen comments. If any citizens who have joined us today would like to make a comment, please feel free to do so at this time. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is communication, which it looks like there are none. So we'll move on to unfinished business.
There's a subcontractor, so that's gonna be kinda hard.
All, I mean, all three of these, uh, all three of these items, both unfinished and new business, kind of require Karen's attendance or at least her participation in the conversation. So with that being said, you know...
I think, gentlemen, we've tried to reach out and see how close we might be.
She's on her way.
Even though we just approved the agenda as is, why don't we, why don't we jump forward to report from committees?
Okay.
And then hopefully after that, maybe she'll be here and we can, we can move on from there. Do we have a report from the ZB?
No, we improved the, approved the one, right? So everybody knew that.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause then we came here.
Yeah.
Okay. Gina, where you got thoughts? Take your time.
Let me think. Okay, so this is from the road commission business. So we were told that there was gonna be a paving of Church Road from Marine City Highway to Meisner. I don't know if that's news to anybody. It was news to me. And the paving on that road has been the county's master plan for sixty years. So apparently the next year is the year.
It's in the county's master plan, right?
Not sure, which one did it?
County.
Church Road?
Church Road.
From Meisner, from Meisner.
And then, and then eventually it's gonna go from Meisner to Division or whatever it's called.
County.
No, Division.
Oh, all the way through.
All the way through.
Oh, well, they just go to the bridge now. That place is not, I washed my car earlier. Everybody goes, "Hey, did you see my car?" And they know I haven't washed it.
What today was in my day, I'm not gonna know too.
There was, yeah, there was an accident on my, um, 26th today. On my way home just now, at BK. I had, I could see it, because I know this turn on the corner line, but they were all, like, self-ashred BK and...
People don't want to...
I'm gonna see.
And then I have something from the park.
Okay.
Creation. Okay, so Joe met with Samantha Davis, and she is the DNR grant coordinator. And he met with her last week at the Dollar for Park. And Samantha is very impressed with the work done so far. And she said that the park is an excellent candidate for a DNR trust fund grant. If, if we were to develop, decide to develop a next phase, taking the road back to the river, which she thought was an excellent idea, and developing an archery area in a small pavilion by the river. And she said that we are in good standings to get a DNR trust fund grant, which is a maximum of $300,000 to develop a recreational space there. So that's good, that's pretty nice.
Actually, we've made like a honey ground.
Sure, why not? Why not? And I don't know, Joe, are you involved in, in, um, the meetings with the, with the park?
Uh, my wife is...
Your wife is?
The recommendation board for us.
So I, I used to be it, then I had to move out.
Yeah.
So I don't know about your meetings, what's going on exactly.
Yeah, the last time we got together was just to assemble the benches.
Oh, that's right. Well, I took the vibe of the year.
Really, that's also...
Those look good when you're driving it too.
Even inside, yes, that's right, yeah. Good job for everybody who's working on it. That's all I have.
Very nice.
It's starting to...
Thank you. Joe paid for this, was it? He did, yeah. I, I still get to, um, does the next thing, plan or plan or... And we have another opportunity for citizen comments. If either...
Thank you.
So this is gonna be like...
We've talked about it.
I have just asked a question. Just this person that said one question. Um, question. So now that this little paving issue of the road is taking, going to take place, so any other impediments to my, uh, landowner car going up behind that place?
I asked a question to him, and I was told we heard nothing.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm not still, I think it was kinda, they kinda backed off a little bit, because I think the business was the paving. They were told, it was kinda clear here that without paving roads, you're not taking trucks down there. I mean, big, you know, trucks to dig up this five acre thing, and they don't need anyways, but, um, okay.
I, I, I thought the same thing. Exactly, right away when I heard that.
Well, hopefully, in my opinion, this is my opinion, hopefully it's done on their planning permission or their master plan for sixty years, and it'll stay there for much longer than another year. I mean, you look at, they wanted to do that around one hour, that got postponed for another year. It seems like they're constantly postponing projects, so maybe it'll be postponed a little longer.
Well, and then the other thing is too, the business of, um, standing going to, or getting, getting a permit to dig something that big would leave here, permission would leave here, because state's gonna take that over. Remember all that discussion about, yeah?
Yeah, very well, like there is...
And you'd be checking or getting a permit from, to do something with that from the state?
Yeah, that would all have to be approved by EDO, which is, or a state agency that covers environmental, I can't read exactly what it stands for, but, um, yeah. They, they would definitely, it's definitely a decision that would be, would be fine like here with this board. Just because of the size and scale and scope and everything. Oh, wonderful, there she is.
Yay!
Sir, did you guys, can you go on to address it more, Bill? Sir?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought I had a good agenda, but we weren't... Gotcha. Welcome.
Welcome.
So Karen, welcome. Thank you for joining us. Uh, we understand traffic was a bit like here this evening. Um, we kinda jumped around a little bit on the agenda just to kinda cover some other things, which brings us back to unfinished business. And we're gonna get that to kinda get your, your notes in order, and then we'll start with the proposed ordinance amendments for section eighty-four home occupation regulations.
Yeah, so, um, home occupation regulations, I have a thing. We made many, many changes in July, and just kinda read everything. But we have a process, because we wanted to discuss the whole commercial, parking commercial vehicles in residential areas. So yes, that's right, that's on the agenda. The banks upon further, you look at it and maybe wanna, if you have any suggestions to what we've tracked with so far home occupation, I guess please let me know. I think this is more so sort of as a reference as we talk about, um, commercial vehicles and residential. So we ensure that whenever if you decide to not hire the current cap of section sixty-six, it aligns with what the commission and people can do if they have occupation in section eighty-four and find out, um, current good law, so.
So the ones that, that are, um, in, in the yellow marker?
Yeah, so those are the, that's the language we're gonna be focusing on. And, 'cause that is what applies to, um, this language specific to rental vehicles.
So I wanna, I wanna ask one question just to kinda start this conversation. I know a lot of this revolves around what you have at your home. I feel like there's, there's almost two, um, issues at hand here. One is people running a business out of their home. The customers that come to their home, the guitar repair guy, maybe a music lesson person, uh, those types of things. Home occupation, to me, that is kind of the quintessential definition of a home occupation. You, you own your home, and you operate a business out of it, where customers come to your house and, and conduct business. I don't know that that is, is really the big concern here within the township. I think the concern is more or less the, the folks that have a business, but that business, the work of that business is all conducted off-site. So your, your landscape contractor, your exhumation contractor, your, your, your tree service, these service type businesses where the guy may have a truck, a trailer, some equipment, but he's not really doing a work of his house. It's just a matter of he needs his home or a barn to store those things at to go to work every day. And I feel like those are two very different things, because, like I said, I mean, a home occupation, you have a business in your home. A service-based business, you're not conducting that business enterprise at your house. You're just parking your stuff there.
Right, but I guess that stuff is kind of possibly on a very, or, well, someone might consider typical residential neighborhood stuff. And even though you're probably dealing with a lot of your business off-stay, you're probably still doing some of the work at home. And if your business is an outdoor storing equipment, like, you might have a work as an office, and it's not just a laptop and a drawer. Like, might you have five nightclubs, five cabinets and whatnot, like?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure most guys, I mean, say, for instance, a, a lawn care company, a guy's got a truck that's laddered up, got a trailer that's laddered up, and, yeah, I'm sure he's got an office somewhere in his home city, does his billing and invoicing and all that kind of stuff. But in theory, a guy like that, eighty to ninety percent of his time is spent away from the home. So it's literally just a spot for him to park his stuff, service maintaining his stuff, and then obviously whatever he does in his house, and what he does in his house, whether he does his invoicing there or from his home, you know, so, right? So I wanna just take that concept into consideration as we're doing this, because I don't want any of the ordinances to be so restrictive that somebody in that position can't do that. I mean, if it's a, a small guy that has, you know, his son or a helper come to his house and they get in the truck and they leave for the day, I, I don't want this to be so restrictive that they can't do that. There's a lot of people that moved to this area, and they may have a home, and maybe their car's not big enough if they have a trailer in it. But as long as they can maintain a neat orderly appearance, and they're not having customers coming and going all day long, and they're not operating and conducting business throughout the day there, I, I wanna make sure that we don't limit somebody that's trying to do something that basic. I guess it's my opinion.
That be handled on a acreage basis? Because obviously, the amount of trucks and trailers you wanna let somebody park on a half acre is a lot different than what you wanna let somebody park on five acres.
For sure.
You know, like, right now, we don't have a subdivision per se, you know? But I see what you're saying. Like, you've got five acres, you've got ten acres, and you've got your trucks and trailers, and they're neatly parked off to the side, and not bothering anybody.
And they're used, and they're used during the day.
But the people that have, have acres, so, and now they're parting two trailers in the driveway, and they got their lawn, and then they're talking a different... So where do you draw the line? Like, where do you wanna draw the line?
Absolutely. And I know there's our recent language, you know, on commercial vehicle excerpt from section sixty-six that, that does require separate parcels must be two acres or greater. So I think that's, you know, a good starting point. But I also think that, you know, if somebody was to approach the board, I think maybe there, there, we need to put something in here that allows for some flexibility or discretion of the board, because if somebody does in fact have an acre and a half, and they have one truck and one small trailer, I don't think that they should be prohibited from doing that just because they're under that two acre threshold. You know, this is what, quantity...
Yeah, quantity.
The quantity has to match the parcel size of acre.
To your point, let's say you have a, or this contractor, a loan payment, or whatever it is. A lot of times you have that truck that holds that trailer, right? It could be a one ton, whatever, right? But the guy that don't have a big truck or a board business, the sales guy, the main guy doing it, he's looking at it with one ton for the same name.
Absolutely.
And to take off all day, you know, whatever.
Right.
Right, etc., I don't know. I, you know, listen, I don't wanna be strictly...
Yeah.
Having to be more subject to the board than, than, you know, 'cause somebody twenty years from now sees it, and they say, "This is exactly what it says, you can't, you can't, you know..."
Right. And, and we've run into that situation in just the very recent past, where it's like, well, every one of us here, a reasonable, like-minded individual can sit here and say, "Well, that doesn't make sense." But if one says a like point, so we have to follow it. So I, I think we need to kinda consider some of that discretion, or consider granting discretion in the language of, of some of these ordinances as we...
And I think there's, there's more and more people now that do have businesses where they're working for.
Absolutely.
Can you, well, just throw it a little button, which, uh, be a need.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
So I, that's kind of a lot, but how do we, how do we make that work? You know what I mean?
So when I was looking around, what other communities do, a lot of communities have, there's similar language, but you have, where they have stuff that's, you know, more stricter. A lot of communities, and I, you know, I looked at towns from South Dakota, Michigan, as well as British Michigan as well. I'd say guys probably need to be more generous. A lot of townships just stereotyped on commercial vehicles, show the, show the park government, or...
But I was...
I don't think they can make a police bet. They can sit there and say all they want to.
Right.
They can't lose it.
I'm just saying, it's one of those. And that's a whole different issue.
Right.
Do you find in rural, rural areas?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, only one day, found that, I think, my, that I got for you guys is Traveling Township. I believe this is in the U.P.
Yeah.
But it talks about white, you can view, and, um, it's a little more flexible than what you allow. Park for trailers, as long as everything's licensed and applicable.
And there's a lot of homes here. There's, there's, when, when I looked at the map, I mean, that place is pretty popular.
Right.
I was surprised.
So, um, something about, I have a really hard time finding any language that was, aside from this, that was more generous than what you guys currently offer. It's not to say that, um, I, I think it's just language that's probably been on the books for maybe fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years that no one's really decided maybe you have an offer.
I love them. I like the other company, Corner Cars. Are not making any trade. Two temporary in-app.
Yeah, I agree. When I read this over, I was pretty surprised at how much they do allow, and how they specifically say, like, how many in-app vehicles, or anything like that. Eight thousand, oh, okay. But I, so you, they've worked through this. Yeah, they've, this is happening too. Like I said, I think the existing home occupation ordinance for businesses that require the customers to come to the house and you're operating your business from the house during that nine-to-five, falls, in my opinion, falls into a different category than a guy who's just looking for a place to store his equipment for his business that services the, the properties and all others.
But that would be, we would draft right now, let's say for business, that would be special land use and allow you guys to have some subjectivity to it, understand how it's looking to spread property, something you said. So stuff like that, but because the language of home occupation is tied to section sixty-six, as we talked about last week, we gotta figure out how we wanna update section sixty-six, or do we want to just have specific language for that type-two home occupation that calls out, these are the requirements for home, for commercial vehicles, um, not, don't, you know, don't refer to section sixty-six. But then again, if someone is operating a commercial vehicle by your employer, or to, you know, have tickets to your residence or whatever, then in a way, that kind of just, someone could, you know, go, "Well, when I look at your neighbor, and their neighbor's like, 'Oh, I have one, because it's on the last market here,'" and say, "Well, we have the same vehicle, and I can do it, because I, I have a boss, and you're your own boss."
Right.
So...
Yeah, there's a guy in the Chinatownship that, he works for Lauer Clancy, and he drives his semi home every night. Makes sense, since he's so close to ground, because he are, but he's, he's right on Meisner, just, uh, east of Indian Trail. And every time I've ever gone by, every weekend, there's something that turns parked to the driveway. I don't need to call it, but, yeah, to say, hey, you can do that 'cause you don't own that business, and it's nice for a boss to bring his truck home. If a guy owns a truck, and he's, "Oh, we can," it's like, "Well, it's that," so...
Okay, so my question is also, in Casco Township, is there any homes that are destined to be used?
Probably, I would say.
Trying to find it.
I mean, Chad, the first thing I think is to check it out, but...
That's good, I'm gonna go.
Yeah, the other, a little ones are rushed. Someone's got some deep lots. And I feel, I feel like it was only that, or parcel that, and see what small ones are.
To me, you can see where they would lend to be a little bit more vague, about the planning permission, the decision.
Right.
On here, they added that if you have more than one set of vehicle orders larger, it'd be approval by planning permission.
And it could be case by case.
Another lack of case and provisions of the ordinance. But then you get, uh... You got a mark on there for every truck, you know?
Yeah, so, you know, we said, so let me ask this, let me ask this question. So say, for instance, we're, we're, the way that we have proposed to rewrite it, um, making it special land use, so that we do have some discretion, some flexibility. So if I went to the township, have a barn, and I wanna park my, my landscape truck and trailer there, I would come, I would come to the board for a special land use review?
If it's your business.
Yeah, I own the business, I moved here.
And that could be the same as in this town.
But if you wanna park anything, your driving, it still have to come?
Yeah, because you're still running from the business side.
Oh, for the business part, yeah. Now, they are in part.
If you, if, if we change the language specifically to commercial vehicles, and someone who works for one trucking companies and is, um, and their vehicle meets section sixty-six, they would not have to come to the management department there. They don't need, unless we specify, maybe, rules to it. But our current coverage doesn't.
Yeah.
But it's only if you're running a business side of your home, then it's just part of your application process for home business.
So with that being said, I think that there's gonna be situations where somebody may come in front of the board, and maybe they just moved out here, maybe they don't have a barn yet, or maybe the barn on the property is not big enough to park whatever piece of equipment they have inside of it. So I, I think if we have that discretion to be able to say, okay, yeah, you don't have a barn or this or that, you have, you have one truck, you have one trailer, you have a small attached garage to your house, which is big enough for you to maintain your equipment, you know, whatever that case may be. I think we need to review the, the requirement to, that everything has to be contained inside. I think that's, could be, I think it's more restricted than it needs to be. If I gotta pick up truck and a bicycle and trailer, and I wanna park those outside of my house, and my, you know, maintain my lawnmowers in my garage?
He can be, he can own a lawnmower, you use that as a lawn.
Absolutely.
Right, so what's the difference?
I don't think anybody should be penalized for owning business. And when you can do things as a township resident that doesn't own the business, but you can't do those same things as a township resident that doesn't own the business, that doesn't, I don't think it's fair.
I mean, the way it currently reads, you can park a commercial vehicle outside as long as any sort of parking section sixty-six is the equipment. And it powers, you know, your backhoes, your seats, your loaders.
Trailers too, right?
Trailers, so it's all considered equipment. So we can specify what equipment is allowed to be parked outside for some, in both sections, you can always do that.
Because most people keep that on the trailer anyway, right? Just pull it back, right, or set it on the trailer.
I would, I, I think the very first thing we need to, to look at is trailers in general, because if I own a small business and I have a pickup truck and an enclosed trailer, and I can put all my equipment inside my trailer, I shouldn't then need to be parked by trailer in my barn? That's the whole point of trailers, that everything's already enclosed in. And then try to, you know, a lot of trailers don't fit the barn. Maybe the door's not big enough, like, the barn's not long enough, all those types of things. Or some parcels and some properties don't have a barn. But if you've got a two-car attached garage to your house, and, and like I said, you own a small tree company or lawn care company, and, you know, all you need is the size of one car to be able to pull your barn in, then they can, you know, change, you know, I'll, or fix it, whatever, then it should be good enough.
I don't wanna break that.
So...
I don't wanna break that.
I have a question regarding the, the difference between the, a type-two and the special land use due to...
Yeah, but I mean, if, if someone comes in and they wanna do something that might not fall within a type-two, do you guys, as the township office, do you say, "You're not gonna qualify for this, you'll have to go for a special land use," or do they have to file one in front of us to find out that they need to do the other?
It would be, if, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be a special land use. And I'm gonna use Mr. Greger's matter as the flip side of the coin. Had he been under what we're proposing, all the concessions, and this is my personal feeling, all the concessions that you made for him really run against the black and white of this ordinance. But if it didn't underspend special land use, you would have had, procedurally, based on the ordinance... under special land use, you would have had, procedurally, based on the ordinance, that latitude, you would have been able to, within the realm of what the ordinance binds you to.
Right.
Because you are there to uphold this ordinance, and it was clearly understood that you disagreed with the black and white that Mr. Kramer was placing.
I don't think all the black and white was totally clear either.
Well.
You say something.
Just trying to interpret.
My opinion in your research.
Yes, that's it. That's my personal opinion. But the special land use gives you that, that latitude to work, to work with each individual person on a case to case basis, based on what they present. And generally, anyone who comes to me with any questions about what they would like to do, one of two ways happens. I either email Karen and give her the contact number of that person, so they can speak to her directly, or I email her and ask her the contact. Karen gives me all the instructions as how I present anything that you have in your packet. Now Karen tells me what procedure we're gonna follow.
So what made Mr. Kramer's situation not special land use?
Because home occupations just aren't special land use. Home occupations are a separate occupation, it's not a site plan, it's not a special land use. It's a planning commission approval, but it's, it's out of its own handle.
Right.
And a lot of communities either handle them, just treat them like a special land use, or they just handle them entirely, like a assignment review or, you know, a building survey or something like that. But home occupations in Casco, they need planning permission approval, but you don't have to follow site plan procedures, you don't follow special land use procedures.
And.
Which makes it, I'd say, it could be nice and strange for them, because you couldn't ask the typical things that we typically ask for a site plan, but we have to follow this language. And unfortunately, you know, it is a situation, we'll look at it, you know, we, we have language there saying, hey, you gotta know your neighbors, but by the way, if it's not a public contract, you're, you know.
Right.
Yeah, it's just, it's just pop things.
So I guess every, every one of these that I've been involved in for home occupation has always required the applicant to present a site plan.
It's supposed to provide a sketch.
Yeah.
So we still.
Well, yeah.
It's not, I.
I guess it's not a full, like engineered site plan, but it's still like, it's still a requirement to, to show what they're trying to do, right?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe that would be the easiest way to separate these things from a very high level. Home occupation is if the business and the customers come to the home, special land use would be if you own a business and you just need your property to store, park, or work on equipment.
Well, the way we direct it so far is for type one, it's gonna be smaller things, it's gonna be fully enclosed, there's not gonna be any employees coming to your house. You aren't planning to build anything, to house any of your stuff, you're just gonna use what's there. That's all the criteria, it would just be an internal review, it doesn't have a planning, the zoning administrator would review it and.
Right.
Review what's on.
Coming with inside of your house.
Yeah.
Where you're doing four or five, whatever.
Or the lawyer. Maybe you even are like a, you know, renter or something. It's pretty minimal space, you don't have to have employees, but if you're gonna have employees, you're gonna start constructing stuff specifically for the business. If you're gonna have a lot of possibly outdoor storage, repair of recreational vehicles, stuff that might be more intense, then that's when it's gonna be the special land use, and that's when it's gonna come to you guys.
So for a type one home occupation, it doesn't even come to the board?
No.
They could, would they come in and talk to?
Talk to the zoning administrator.
Yeah, but I'm reading further around. Does zoning extend to C, D, E, F, G? You know, the zoning administrator would sign off on approval for all of those things, because that would be a first of the years that I've worked here. Generally, the planning commission would.
For type one? Or on, or.
Yeah, the charge gentleman had, he came before you.
Right.
There was a public.
We're, we're trying to change that now, so that's why we're drafting, you know, the, the, it was, the, the car repair shop, was it intense enough? Or, I mean, it had come with land because of.
That's the way it is.
That's the way, if, no.
That's the way it is now. We're drafting it so that if you basically have a small business, it's inside your existing structure, not having employees, might sell customers to their house, but it's pretty minimal, pretty basic. It's just gonna be an internal review, hopefully something gets turned around, and, you know, no getting access to it. Whereas if you wanna do something on time, then it's gonna be public hearing, your neighbors will allow it, they'll be able to speak up about it if they want, but if it passes, you can build an accessory building for this stuff. A lot of people are like, can I even do the thing I wanna do? You know, suppose before we run the situation tool, they don't have a barn, but I wanna build a barn to it, but I don't know if I can do it or not.
Right.
So that would be a little flexibility to kind of develop their site indicators, what they like to do. Still needing all the permits that we're putting out, but they can have vehicles, equipment, employees come to their house.
As a type, as a type.
It would be a special land use.
Why is it special land use?
Because it.
Special land use is, to me, is taking a property that's commercial, and you wanna put like a little industrial type commercial setup, that's special land use.
Special, special land use is, it could, it's a use that could be, that could be permitted under the right circumstances, under the discretion of the zoning. That's all that special land uses are. Every district has permitted uses and special land uses. Right now, home occupation is a permitted use, but all home occupations regardless of how intense they are, not to come before a planning. We're giving you two options, where depending on how intense it is, it will either have an internal review, or it's gonna be a planning commission review that has a public hearing on it.
So that, by definition, is a special land use.
That's why they have those permitted use, you cannot have a public hearing on it.
So C there should really state special land use and not home occupation.
Well, it's type one two home occupation, it's under the beginning of section eighty-four.
Well, it says special land use, special land use approval shall be given upon finding the, the, upon the planning commission. And the proposed, home occupation complies with the following statements. So it does say, in, in title C, type C, we'll just say home occupation slash special land use.
So is that a smaller special land use permit, and it's all?
All special land uses have to go through the same process.
So.
So this type two home occupation permit, they're gonna be an engineered site plan?
No. Well, I could classify, you can still submit a sketch plan, I'll have to submit the same criteria, but in order to have a public hearing for it.
So other than this, there's another section for special land use. So we're gonna have home occupation one, home occupation two, and special land use?
No, special land use, so, just sorry, so, home occupation one is an internal review.
Correct.
Home occupation two is a special land use. We can specify what they need to submit. We can say, so follow the sketch plan, they're gonna be building something, but will need to see some kind of illustration of what they're planning to do there. But we, if we're gonna be holding a public hearing for it, the way to do that is a special land use.
And is that a requirement that we have to have a public hearing or turn somebody on to our business out of their house?
Not, if, not for the type one, but for type two. I mean, we can, most communities do it, either they have special land use or they just have an internal review. They're not.
In the past, if we did special land use, just notify the neighbors around that area, not, not the four hundred, yeah, that was it.
You know, if I don't, I put a post in the paper, maybe the same thing.
Did we put a post in the paper for that special land use?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. And then we sent letters to neighborhood property owners with the three hundred feet of the subject property.
On our existing special land use, you need to have an engineered site plan too, because I remember when I did the corn mites, they made me.
You can specify in one year.
Make a engineer for.
They should, a lot of them should.
Mr. Kaitz was a special land use.
Special land use was a special land use.
Yeah, so we had that in the record.
The chair had a special land use on it.
So is, I'm still trying to understand the differences here. The type two is a special land use.
It would be, it would be a special land use.
So we can just cut out home occupation type two, and just call that special land use, and it's.
No, it's totally all a special land use. Because we have special land uses, you know, the concrete pressure jump starts, that's, that's, the home occupation have to, is it falls into the category.
Right. But if a guy wanted to have a lawnmower repair shop, that would fall under that the same way that the rock pressure.
No, it's not.
And, and they would come in front of us and, you know, or a landscaper, if he wanted to park trucks in his house, but he's not running a business out of his house, he would come in.
Well, if he's not running a business out of his house, and he's just doing the commercial parking, he doesn't need to come to us as long as he follows the rules. If for whatever reason, someone starts following, is not following rules, it's a code enforcement issue. But the commercial vehicle stuff alone, if you work for someone else, you're parking the stuff at your house, as long as it's allowed.
Yeah. But if the guy owns a landscaping business himself, and just wants to park at home, but he doesn't, you know, he's not conducting a business at his home, still special land use. But, but within special land use, we can't, we have the discretion to make the requirements not a certain, a test.
Well, no, whatever requirements you put in, they have to follow. You can choose the extra conditions, like you need to screen this or whatever, or you can put reasonable extra conditions on it for special land use, but you still follow all the language that we put in.
But theoretically, we could leave that whole section, case by case, what do you have, and what do you do?
I don't think.
And I don't think it's a bad idea either, but I wanted to.
Right, but they're saying, there's something here. Whatever we're doing for type two, it shouldn't be less descriptive than what we're telling people in type one, and just get the internal review.
Right.
Because if, if we wanna be less descriptive, we'll just lump everything into the internal review, so they don't even have to go through this. But the purpose is, it's gonna be more intense, so it could possibly start looking more commercial than residential.
Yeah.
So that's.
I think, I, I think type one, internal review, type two, special land use, they come in front of us, they give us a sketch of what they wanna do, they explain how they're operating their business from their house, and that gives us a good idea. Is this something that they're, you know, at all day, or are they gone all day, or how many vehicles, all those kinds of things?
Yeah, a hundred.
Right, and, and then, you know, we can kind of make a decision whether or not it fits what, you know, what, where we wanna be from there. But I guess my point is, how do we go about leaving those requirements rather loose during special land use and letting, you know, and, and then figuring out on a case by case basis, if the guy comes in, he says, I, I don't have a pool bar, but I only have one truck and trailer, I can do my maintenance in my garage. Okay, you're good. You know, but if, if the guy says, I got thirty trucks and, you know, this and that, okay, well then, no, sorry, that's not gonna work. And then the other, the other point I wanna make is, I know that these two, the home occupation stuff is directly related to section sixty-six for commercial vehicle parking, but I think we need to sever that connection and define in the type two requirements, the businesses, the, the vehicles that are allowed and how they need to be stored. And then this section sixty-six would apply more to the person who doesn't own a business, but is taking home a vehicle, and keep those two things separate from, from being tied to each other. Because if I go through a special land use, and I operate my business from home, that means I have a commercial vehicle, most likely. All of those rules pertaining to me operating my business should be contained in here, not this reference back to section sixty-six, which then creates a whole bunch of other rules and regulations on the vehicles. And, you know, it's like, well, I just got approval to run my business from my house, and now this other rule says that I can't keep the essential equipment, trucks and trailers for my business at my house.
So if you run your own business, or if you have a home, approved home occupation, what kind of commercial vehicles do you think should be allowed in a residential area?
I think.
Any, how many?
On the property side, I would say. I, I would say we depend on the property side something. Because here's, here's the thing, how can you, how can you tell a guy with a pickup truck and a lawn trailer that he's allowed, but then you got the next guy who has maybe a slightly bigger truck and a slightly bigger trailer, know you're not allowed? I mean, essentially, it's the same thing, a truck and trailer.
But what about the kind of ten, ten trucks and ten trailers?
Well, there, but, so, type, if, type of vehicle and quantity of vehicle is different, in my opinion. Whether I have a pickup truck and have an eighteen foot trailer, or a dump truck with a thirty foot trailer, still one truck, one trailer. It makes the same noise coming and going, it's the same amount of traffic coming and going. Now, to your point, if I live on two acres and I want, and my business has thirty trucks, no, that doesn't work. So I don't know how to look at that, you know, on a sliding scale, okay, two to five acres, you're permitted one truck and trailer. Five to ten, you could have three trucks and trailer, I, I don't know.
We need to know the sliding scale, because in the future, what will happen is if there isn't a somewhat specific, even though we don't wanna get regulatory now too, we need to be able to, three years from now, mathematically, what do we tell that guy?
Right.
Like four, this guy has three, and he's, you know what I mean, like, how do we keep it?
I, I think, like I said, they said, like, two to five acres, you get this.
What if there were one that had a chart and then two acres, and I thought this was.
If somebody has that large amount of, of, of trucks and trailers, I mean, it just makes sense for them to have a business in a different area.
I agree. I think there should be a limit, no matter how large the property, unless you're able, maximum of.
Yeah, because it applies to special land use too. You can tell them at that point that that's, you're way too big.
Yeah.
Yeah, if somebody comes in, and, and if somebody comes to the board and our businesses are in the size of fifteen trucks and trailers, no, you don't, that doesn't fit the use. But if somebody comes here with one truck and trailer, and then in ten years, they grow their business, and they're on two acres, and we give them approval for one truck and trailer, but then they're good in business, and they grow the business, at some point there has to be something in writing that makes it enforceable to say, hey, you've outgrown the approval, you forgive it.
Yes.
Wouldn't they have to come back with a revised site plan, if they're increasing the business that much?
I agree.
But what, what if they, what if they increase the business one truck and trailer every other year for five years? Doesn't sound like a lot, but ten years.
Please put a cap on what, you know, on the commercial, because right now, it says you're allowed to have one commercial vehicle, and any additional equipment supplies needs to be stored somewhere. I guess, how much more do we want? Do we want to allow two? Max, you know, because I guess the thing is, we're allowing people to run a business in residential areas, where your neighbors are also anticipating a residential area, and they start sitting three or five trucks, or, you know, whatever, they're gonna start, you know, it's gonna become, you're gonna.
It'll be an issue, absolutely.
It's, you know, keeping in mind that the residential district is supposed to be primarily for residential and agricultural uses and key tech area, and also, again, we've just been mentioning, I don't want to say commercial, where you're typically, you know, you're just becoming more commercial. So.
So like, for instance, you have, you're allowed one truck and trailer on a two acre park, let's just say. I'm not saying this is specific. And then, who will allow me to have one truck, two trucks, and two trailers attached to those trucks with the equipment confined to the trailer on up to five? and bind to the trailer on up to five? Let's, if we went that route.
Up to five, why?
The key to, let's say, five acres.
Oh, okay.
Is your equipment must remain on the trailer. Like, how much equipment are you going to, I can have four backhoes, three trailer, three these and three that, and taking them in and out all the time. Like, that equipment has to come too.
Right.
You know, what they have sitting there. Compared to the guy, like, I agree with you on the guy that is taking that truck and that trailer, he's got two acres, he has one truck and he's taking it off. He's got five acres, he's got two trucks, he has a skid and a truck, and they both have a trailer, all their stuff is in their trailer, and they're leaving for the day. Maybe 10 acres, they get three, maybe four, I don't know, I'm not saying that. And then, then it stops. Okay, you've gotten five trucks and trailers, so you've grown your business to a point where this is no longer fit residential, you've capped out, now you have to.
I, I mean, I think even five is generous, I think.
Yeah, what would a number be?
If you grow a business beyond the need for three commercial trucks and three trailers, you're at one business where you should be in, in, in an industrial or commercial space.
I would be comfortable saying two, I mean, two.
Two, three. I, what I believe, what size.
The size issue, right, you know, you get, you're a, one.
Right, my goodness. My, my whole point is, I don't want to limit the guy.
You know, pick up truck, a trailer.
I don't want to limit the guy that comes out here because he is self-employed and owns a business, and he's got one truck, one trailer, and goes out and cuts grass or trims trees, or does any other. Though, that's, in my mind, that's why a lot of people come out here. Now, if you're a large commercial.
Right.
With lighters and even, you know, a hard floor, you know, like, there's so many different small businesses that operate with one or two trucks and trailers. If you have a, a full-blown commercial contracting business, or you have excavators and backhoes and spisters and dozers and semis, you're not allowed it, I mean, it's.
And that's, I totally agree, I guess.
You need to get rid of that one.
But you should have to. Right, what is, what is a fair way to do it?
So, I mean, we could update it and say that, you know, um, you're allowed, you want to do two or three commercial vehicles, and all your stuff has to be stored somewhere, or from the store outside, it's got to be screened. Like, you, plantings or fencing or whatever.
Shouldn't it be on the trailer?
Well, not necessarily, because I think if, if, if I own two or five acres, and I have a piece of equipment that doesn't go in every job, I may have to leave it at home, maybe I build, you know, a berm with some trees on it, or a fence or something to, to screen it from sight. You know, I think that's more reasonable than saying, hey, you have a berm, you have a.
Yeah, I agree, at least you have a screen to some form, because a guy might have a small excavator business, one day he uses a skidder, and one day he might use many excavators, but he only has one trailer. My whole problem with that is, I drive by all these houses, they get all this crap, not one of them's got a business. And it's like crap.
Right.
And I'm never worried about it.
I have a berm, I have my tractor, and my trailer, and, and it's all personal stuff, so it's, it doesn't fall under any of these, but it's okay for. I know, and that's, that's the hard part.
The part that I put aside on my tractor is a problem.
Right, that's the hard part about it is, I mean, you, you basically force people into, to.
You just make people.
I, I, in certain instances.
Yeah, I, I wish that would allow for more commercial vehicles and the option to store stuff outside as long as it's not visible from the road or any of your properties. If you want to put a berm or vegetation, you can store it outside, it doesn't have to be in a building. And maybe we should also set a limit of what that outdoor storage, how big that area can be.
Yeah, you know, you can't be visible from the road, that's another word you can't use. I can drive over here and see from this angle.
Right.
Or.
The whole point of the idea is that it's open land, it's open far countries. You know, in all of somewhere, except for knowledge of all something, because we have a parcel because we have, you know, we don't want to look at a berm or a tractor. And then, I, I think certainly back to this, I think we need to completely separate home occupation stuff from the section 66, uh, off the park requirements, and then re-review section 66 because that's someone that really, in my mind, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Just some of the language that's in there just needs to be updated in terms of, like I said last time, I mean, it, it permits a semi-truck, but you can't bring a trailer along, so, like, doesn't make sense. And I think for, uh, section 66, when it comes to commercial vehicles, it should be limited to one commercial vehicle. Because if you don't own the company and you're just bringing home your work vehicle, it should never be more than one in theory.
Should it be one, one vial with the trailer?
Yeah, one complete vehicle, if that means that that is a truck and a trailer, then that's fine. But there's this language of the vehicle weight rating of 26,000, how, how are we supposed to even police that? Where, you know, go and look at what, what, what the truck's paid for, all this other stuff, it's like. So, like, Leonard, I think this needs to be completely, in all senses, to. So when I look at 66, number two needs to be rewritten, because I don't think we've, I think I should just say a commercial vehicle, single commercial vehicle, maybe part on a parcel and add, well, I don't think we need to put this gross vehicle weight or semi-tractor, blah, 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 that's not necessary. Uh, two acres or greater, I think is fine, I don't think that's an issue. Anyways, commercial vehicle must be operated, I think that's fine. While I receive commercial vehicles exceeding gross vehicle weight here and there completely, I don't think we need to limit the type of vehicle based on weight, there's no way, yeah, there's no way they even police that or, or enforce it. You're going to go out there and take measure, make sure it's part.
The guy who wanted that talks about how far from the neighboring residence in that whole section. Get rid of the weight maybe, but.
And I think that that might also, um, park to the side of the rear yard.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Because they, they don't want those parked in the front of the house, you know, I think that's part of the reason.
I think that's why you can't be parked in front of.
Maybe leave the second half of that one.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, show me parked in the side of your, but, but again, okay, so if I drive, if I drive a Coca-Cola van, I don't own Coca-Cola, I'm an employee, and I drive this van, I don't manage driveway to go around the side or the back of my property. Now, you're telling me I can't park this Coca-Cola van in my driveway because it's in front of my house?
Well, I don't know, we do enforce that ordinance.
I'm just saying, I, I mean, I think that's why we would make it out of it.
You do, you do.
That's, that's a pretty common standard for commercial vehicles, there are a lot of residential, it's got to be.
In the side or anything?
It's got to be, yeah, behind or the side, but the house needs to come for the vehicle.
I agree with that, yeah, it's got to be at least to the side of, in a house.
Well, I mean, I agree with that, so, so you're, uh.
I'm just saying, to the side of the house, right, because you, your garage, nothing can be in front of your house.
There's enough.
And even.
You can't sign that.
You can't.
Yeah, you can't build accessory structure, but, again, so, I work for Coke, and I drive a, a, a delivery van, this little, you know, Sprinter van, it says Coca-Cola, that's a commercial vehicle. You're telling me I can't park it in my driveway?
That's true.
Yeah.
In front of your garage.
Right.
Yeah, like.
You can.
Motor City, Electric, everyone of those guys has a truck to take them.
Yeah.
Everyone parks them.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you don't have a house where, where you have a driveway or something to park along the backside or side of your house, you're going to drive your.
That's why. On there, lanes or whatever.
Yeah, because a lot of drivers just stop right in front of the house.
Yeah, basic laws. Yeah, I mean, you know, look, look at all the consumer energies guys that have their, their company trucks.
And, 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 any good in any garage?
Good one.
So, I, I don't know what, what makes the most sense there, but I think saying that absolutely zero commercial vehicles can be parked in front of the house is, is too restrictive.
Maybe just maybe for me.
Yeah, I mean, there's just so many instances that, that, you know, employees of companies are granted to take home vehicles that don't have the ability to drive into their side or backyard.
You could wax, waxy, even 100 feet from your neighboring property. Oh, depends on where your house is located, on your neighbor's house is located. That's tough.
That's why I said, if it was me, I would eliminate all the other, I mean, it's hard, hard to enforce, it's overbear, overburdened some, you're going to go out there.
Only in this state.
Oh, you're 90 feet away. Come on.
If a house only has to be 15 feet from the property line, your house has to be 20, 15 feet from the property line, that doesn't have to be 100 feet. No, it has a problem.
Right.
That's a lot, that's a lot of space.
Yeah. No, uh, Leonard, do you know commercial trailers or semi-trailers are being parked in residential districts? Again, I think you, you can access a line, if you can bring your truck along, you can bring your trailer home, as long as it's, it's not, it's there to leave. It's not there for, as a permanent structure. In no instance shall any commercial vehicle park, be parked within the designated roadway, that's fine, public easement, that's fine. Vehicles licensed or used for ag activities protected by Michigan, that's fine. Right to, the right to park a commercial vehicle on a residential property does not grant, according to that residency, right to operate home, that's fine too. So, I think those would be my recommendations to section 66 to disconnect it from home occupation, where we can address commercial vehicles, uh, that are owned by the home occupation in that ordinance. And I think off-street parking. I, I guess to your point about, like, in the front of the house and the back of the house, I mean, maybe, maybe put a light guide in there that says if it's a commercial vehicle over a certain size, or a company by a trailer, yeah.
It requires a C E O to operate the vehicle, or?
Yeah, then maybe it's something that has to be behind, you know, I mean, if it's not like a, a typical driveway-sized vehicle, I don't know how you can put that in, in, in the ordinance, but, I mean, if it's not just a single truck, van, whatever the case may be, then it, then it has to be on the side or the back. If it's just a, a single truck or van, or car, whatever the case may be, then it could go in the driveway, in front of the house. Does that make sense, Karen?
Is there a way, a word that, like, uh, you know, a vehicle of size that is typically driven by an average person? You know, what should cover any pickup trucks or vans, uh, but would cover, you know.
Would it be, would it be, would it be just put in there, uh, um, any vehicle that does not specialize, any vehicle that does not require a specialized license?
I'm fine with that. Yeah, exactly, if you go by vehicle weight, I mean, if that, he's got an F-550, he uses a tow camera or something, or puts his name outside, that, that doesn't bother me, you know, you don't want to get.
I would say any, any.
Represented in the front.
Right, any vehicle that, that requires a specialized license to operate for, any vehicle or company by a attached trailer must be parked on the side or rear of the home.
That's true.
Well, there. Any other comments on that? Give me enough to bed, Jess. Give me other questions or suggestions for us and try and get this out of them.
No, I'd say, I consider, I wish you were a percentage of the laws.
I think if we're going to be progressive like this, it would be nice, and I already know how you would say this, but if we're going to, because we want to be for your, for the people that have it, a way to write something that the vehicles and their parking need to be predominant to, not, not everybody, like, might need to be predominant to your home, not somebody else, you don't want to say this, but, so, I got a truck and a trailer. I put them in my driveway, that's no problem, but I don't want to look at it. So now I'm going to put them as far off to the side of my house, so I can't see them, but they have to look at it. You know what I'm saying, like, how could we word that, where they, you know what I'm saying?
Mine would be, they'll go behind you.
Yeah, so you're kind of, and it tells you, it tells you kind of, the, you know, that this is where your houses are. All this changes by where your house and where your garage sits compared to the neighboring property.
Are you talking about just present in section 66, or are you talking about, or like that?
I guess not, I mean, like, um, even if you just said 50 feet off the property, something like, don't go chuck your thing right on the property line, because you don't want to look at it, but you're going to make me look at it. Do you know how people do it too?
I do.
Do you know, I mean, that's where I don't like a little bit of setback to some extent. Because even though we would not do that, you would not do that.
But here's my question to you on that, if I park behind my barn, so I don't have to look at it, does it really make a difference if it's 10 feet off the property line, 50 feet off the property line, it's still behind my barn? And if I'm looking at that truck off that door, that's probably 50 feet away, but it really doesn't make much difference? I can see it the same as if it's there, or if it's parked right near where they're sitting?
I guess it just depends on where your neighborhood comes from.
Yeah, it's all situational, I mean.
Yeah, that's the hard part.
And the whole thing about this section 66.
I know, it's, I'm funny, I don't get it, I really just don't think that it's a rest, but honestly, no, they just keep going, they just keep going.
Right, now, how often is off-street parking, section 66, uh, how, how often are there enforcement actions around that?
Generally, it would be if there's a complaint.
Right.
If we get a complaint, the ordinance enforcement officer will.
Back in their life.
Observe, no, no. And, uh, generally, we have compliance. It's, he shows what's written.
I think, and this is just my opinion, I think we, as the way that this ordinance is written, I would wager that we don't have a lot of compliance, we just don't have a lot of complaints.
And that could be very bad. I mean, most people in the township are very considerate of the neighbors.
Yeah, absolutely.
The neighbors are very tolerant.
Of the others.
Other neighbors, yes.
I have a lot of nerve to push calls that, like Joe Gibbs. People are crazy.
So, all right, I, I think, I think that's a good place to start, or revise section 66, because it, I, it's been quite a, this, this whole section 66 is part of it, because that's really nothing to do with us anyways, other than the fact that we're responsible for the way the ordinance is written. But once it's written, none of this in here is anything that anyone ever is going to come to us and for, come to us for. It's going to be a matter of, okay, there's new ordinance out there, the ordinance is rewritten, and now people have to follow it. And if they don't, and it's a, an ordinance enforcement issue, it's not a climate permission issue. But because it's directly related to the home occupation, that's why I think we need to further separate it, so that these two things, they are different things. Off-street parking relates to people that don't own a business, home occupation is for people that do own businesses. And the parking that goes along with it is also separate, um, topics in my mind. So, okay. We, um, so we kind of covered unused business and proposed ordinance, and I think we talked in great detail about new business, section 66, off-street parking. Uh, the last thing I need to add on new business is the proposed ordinance discussion of section 65, excuse me, accessory buildings, J shipping containers, which we have a printout here in our ordinance. Overall, truck, trailer, shipping containers, other enclosed containers and similar vehicles. Any containers shall not be permitted in permanent accessories, buildings, and any zoning district. The building inspector may permit permission to trade out shipping containers, similar enclosed vehicles, any containers for temporary storage, and build at destruction sites for six, for a period of six months. Performance, cash, performance guarantees, that's removed. Okay, what is the? Okay. What is the general opinion of this ordinance?
Well, they say shipping containers are the enclosed containers, but what exactly does that mean and what size? What is an enclosed container and what size?
I think what they're talking about there is like your, uh, essentially like the, the semi-trailer or the back of a large box truck or a Penske truck or a Uall truck that is no longer attached to the truck itself, that's just sitting on the ground.
Pardon? That you mean?
Yeah.
Because they're larger, I mean, is there a size limit?
This, there's no, there's, it's not a question at all. In progressive fashion, this one, my, my opinion is if. I think there's a lot about there, and I don't really see the issue with the shipping containers or the box trucks that are no longer box trucks.
What's your issue with shipping containers?
It's basically been an unenforceable ordinance.
Unenforceable, what, what is your problem?
There's so many now.
We're like, in past, like.
Where do you draw the line and start, uh, you know, going to someone and saying, you can't do that, and we've counted down the road and we don't know.
How much, so if, if somebody has one, as it's written right now, somebody has one, they get a, a letter from the ordinance enforcement saying, hey, you're out of compliance with this ordinance, and they don't agree with it, what happens then?
Generally, there's three letters written from the code enforcement officer. I correct myself. Two. If there's not compliance, they generally will get a letter from the township attorney advising them that they're in violation. She usually gives them, I want to say, ten days, and then if that compliance is not made, uh, court action could be taken, but it could be taken on.
So what, what it means is?
How much time does the town official spend going after a shipping container?
All of these. I would rather say, personally, I don't despise shipping containers. I do despise I'm attracted to shipping containers. Like, let's say I'm gonna have a shipping container for the mates, and I'm gonna store it somewhere, and it's neatly, it's painted red, it's not, it doesn't have, like, I don't have four different color ones, all have different names on the sides of them, I don't look like a truck freight guard, or I don't look like a, you know, I use one, maybe now they're using it for animal, you know? A lot of cars are using them, they're putting, I mean, they make beautiful ones, they have these beautiful steel doors, with steel floors, and they're using them for animal pets. I mean, there's a lot of great uses for them if they're done right, and I think if you're good at it, the ordinance, and you're gonna allow them, part of it's gonna go back under the blame department to make sure that they are maintained and they're not.
Unsightly.
Unsightly, and the weeds are cut up around them, they're not, but you can't maintain that now. You know what I mean?
I think, um, I think, for the more, I agree with you one hundred percent.
I'm watching the people that would do them nicely by not allowing them, because like, for instance, maybe, and then I got my letter, I got rid of mine. I took them to a storage lot, um, this was back fifteen years ago, I don't think, don't think they're even now. And a lot of these people that have them, they look terrible, they're just, you know.
I don't believe so, don't you?
Yeah, the, the, the thing is, the thing is, you're not the kind of guy that goes out and picks people, that you probably passed a dozen.
You're not pushing them.
Today, and you don't even notice that.
I actually voted for them and I can see them.
Off ninety-four, right before the Friday race, the newer builder, he sat shipping container but it's painted. It's painted nice. Nobody ever noticed.
So I think we should drive by it and, and you know.
They're probably, you know, they're also, they're on purpose and a lot of them use them.
The shipping container, I mean, I think that's a sort of.
The doors and windows of them, they use them as little sheetroo, I mean, they have all kinds of great uses, but they also can be a nuisance if not, not maintained and not, but so can, so can a, a crunchers are being, that's sitting there with a carburetor for twenty years and.
Yeah.
The craters over there, you know, so then you just get back to life.
Or that boat that guy's in fits.
Yeah.
New home construction does allow them. This is state sealed. There's a two thousand five hundred dollar bond. And that has worked very well.
So in my opinion, I think we could rewrite this ordinance to allow the shipping containers and even possibly the, the, uh, truck boxes, I don't know what, what's the right word, trailers, if you wanna call it that. However, with the truck boxes, I think that it has to be something that's stationary on the ground. I think, you know, there's people that will buy an old used semi-trailer, and they just park this trailer in the middle of their yard, and the legs are sitting in the ground, and it's sitting on flat tires. That's not the intention, but if you could get, you know, a Penske box that's nice, has a nice roll-up door, you can paint it, looks, looks like, that your house is well-maintained, or a shipping container is well-maintained, it's, it's painted, it looks nice, it doesn't look like, you know, it's all refitted, uh, twenty-five ton.
Wait, then a lot of people are using them, and here's a prime example, Glancy's using them to hold the door. Why wouldn't you store your rakes and mulchers out? You've got these beautiful, brand-new shipping containers that are now anchoring this. Why would you not go up to the garbage you got laying in your yard inside it? So they can, in the right situation, serve a good purpose, if done right.
Glancy's promised people they're gonna put anything in it.
They did, but I'm saying if the, the ordinance was there.
My very excellent.
If, if they were able to, some of the stuff in the yards would be in them, and that would look better.
I, I absolutely agree with you, and I think, I think there's a lot of people that, because they can't have a shipping container, have just random stuff strewn out their yard.
Maybe they like that stuff in the yard, but I don't like.
Polite, tens of thousands of dollars of shipping containers for a couple of grand, one thousand dollars, lots of them. It's made of thing, you know, made of thing.
So that's, that's our, that's, that's our thoughts on this, Karen. Can you rewrite that and make all else, that would make sense?
Well, Conley, I have county townships, um, they're like, and they get options for, you know, permanently, for only temporarily, um, and stuff for like, uh, the pods or whatever stuff that's gonna be very temporary for, you know, moving things for a short period of time. I think it's a good starting point, obviously, you guys can, um, look at this and, um, if there's anything here you disagree with, or more, more standard to justify, but I thought this gave people a lot of options if they wanted to use a shipping container or a property.
No, I didn't look over some of this, and, and a lot of this doesn't make sense. Um, I think.
I do have a problem with the livestock for pets, because I do think it's a great, it's a new use for them that is becoming very popular, that's.
And it starts from a lot of education, I mean, like you said, people are using these things for all kinds of different, you know, you can actually buy them now where they're structurally modified, windows, doors, and different things like that, and somebody that is doing something like you're doing, they might run a ticket booth or a concession stand out of one of these versus building, you know, a fifty thousand dollar building, and houses with a vet. Yeah, I'm a good point. Um, so I, I do like this idea, or this, this example here from Conway Township. I think it does open up the use of them while still providing a lot of, uh, limitations, uh, so that we don't really get out of hand with this. Um, I like, you know, they specifically say, writing graffiti, it has to be removed, painted, whatever.
Only one corner, just simple, one, it needs to be one solid.
I do, I also like, I also like that it says it needs to be, whatever it says, it has to be, um, placed where it's not visible from the road. You know, so if you're gonna use, if you're gonna have one of these, it's gotta be in the backyard or whatever, I think that makes sense. Um, but no, I, I think this is a, this is a good.
And solid foundation, and just thinking of the law.
Right.
Under A, though, I think I, I agree, I'd strike ten and eleven on that. Just for modifications and livestock for pets.
Or not?
I would leave nine.
Yeah. I don't think.
Oh, okay, I see. It's negative.
It's negative, yeah. No, it cannot be used for that.
And I like that, there's also one here that says that no calling can be wrong.
Nine does not apply when you're using the storage containers as a main house, which is also on.
That's a lot.
There's, there's certain places where people are using shipping containers to get all the whole houses. There's actually a couple that I love that, like, they're really, really cool concept. And so let's refer to the plan of vision. At any time, I have to receive an application for cargo container or storage containers.
So ten, ten and eleven should be possible.
So what this would say is that there are, if they, if somebody does wanna put one of these in their yard, uh, they would have to come in front of the board, just ask for approval, tell them what they wanna do, maybe show a picture of the container.
That's what Conley does. Um, again, if we're gonna be treating it like an accessory structure, if it's in a commercial district, it would come before us, but if it's residential, typically it wouldn't, unless we decided that we would. My question does not review shipping containers for.
I don't think we need to. I mean, as long as it falls within this, and if it doesn't.
I think, I think we should review them in the residential, not in the commercial. I mean, commercially, you almost expect to see these types of things versus in a residential, I think it would be the place where somebody should come to the board and say, hey, I want to put one of these containers in the backyard, and they can make sure that they understand the rules and regulations, and are, are going to follow that, and it was kind of outlined, okay, yeah, you can do this, but it's how you're paying it, you can't have plumbing, you can't be living in it, and if, you know, if there is code enforcement that will be monitoring these things or something.
That's, I think that's all in here, and if they apply for it, they'd have to read through this and.
Right, it would be part of the application.
Right, and then if they didn't comply with any of that, it's on code enforcement, I don't see, then that's just.
Right. Who would use those?
What, right now?
Yeah.
No.
Shipping container?
Not at all, like, in general, if there's something that's a, like, there's.
It's a separate building, it's not.
No, the, the building official, they submit their, uh, three sets of, uh, drawings of the plan here. Uh, the applicant gets two passes, one for the personified, one that has to be posted at the site at all times, and then we have one for the office.
Well, we wouldn't give them all that for this. I mean, that's because they're actually constructed to something. But my, my question is just, if somebody comes in and they, they are trying to do something that is administrative review type, it's always gonna be the building official, but like, like, on that, going back to the type of home occupation, that's administrative review type, like, the use of the zoning administrator would review that, correct?
And that's, that's new, that hasn't been this way, which is fine.
Right.
But would it come to you for your, your approval before the zoning administrator does the same?
For type one? Um, I mean, it, I guess that's up to the zoning administrator.
Would it make more sense to have the zoning administrator review this shipping container, uh, application versus the building's traffic?
Well, each one is the same, but he, they should be set back in compliance.
What about the decree?
You know, they should be the fifteen feet away from the property line.
Right.
Where's your payment? And that's we find that out. Well, I mean, I don't know what the.
That's what they were trying to do before.
With the, I know, with, uh.
Hey, that's just in there, you put on this, that slide, it's not.
Even that, why, pull out a cross map, and they don't.
Yeah.
We haven't had one permit for a hoop building since you put that in place. And you see them everywhere.
So.
Yeah, but this too, this costs, and all your are costing residents a lot of money by doing that. That's how we're doing it.
It's like this.
It might be perfect for you, like, all residents up there.
You know, this, it's, we're not being, we're not able to enforce it. You know, I don't know if people.
But maybe, maybe people, people wouldn't go through the process, the correct process, if there wasn't a fee schedule associated with it. I mean, like, hoop building, I, if I knew, and I think this might be the general idea, okay, hoop buildings are approved. So I could either put one out and hope that people see it and just think that it was approved with channels, or I go to the city, they're gonna give you the approval anyways, but now I got paid the fee to give you the approval. That's why people are just slapping them up and saying, oh, that wasn't bad there, oh, that was.
Yeah, that's the conundrum we found ourselves in, so we don't wanna create any more problems than, you know, you can't, oh, I had it up before your ordinance came in, it goes bad. How are we gonna prove what they think? You know?
On the cargo containers, I think there should be an anchorage limit. And I do think they should be coated in gravel. Only because it's going to.
Yeah, but it all depends on the biggest cargo container. So you can have some that are not that big.
Maybe the, like, if you bring a forty-foot storage container, like, what I did, what I did, it should have been on gravel. It's probably, maybe in my case, it was in the woods, nobody saw it, but most parcels, most, let's say, eight-five, they put parcel around here. Number three, the, if you put this out there, nobody's gonna get it, because it cannot be visible from the road, you're gonna see everyone from the road. So if you put this in writing, it's impossible for anybody to have it anyways. So number three would have to be shot out, in my, in my opinion. I would rather get rid of number three, allow them to be seen, but they must be neat, clean, painted one color, and sitting on gravel.
Which, which.
For a certain size.
Which number three?
Number three, I'm gonna use one, with a cargo container.
No, it was four. Contain, cargo.
Number four.
All right, yeah, cargo containers should be located in the rear yards, with the exception that cargo container may be allowed in the side yard, not four, but in front of the building. So that's okay, rear.
Four, I'm talking about the four, I'm sorry, I didn't get it wrong.
Cargo containers must be, must be screened, it's not visible, yeah, I think that's.
I'm gonna screen a cargo container, so I'm gonna put a metal wall around, you know, that, that cart doesn't.
Yeah, I agree.
And then, or you could put, unless approved by planning commission, and maybe you could bring, this is what I'm gonna put up, this is where it's gonna be, this is a picture of what it's gonna look like.
I don't, I mean, I don't know, I didn't read through this in its.
The longevity of them is much better, and they do look better longer on gravel. Because they do rot.
This, in, in Jim, Jim's here, by letter B, cargo containers for permanent storage, let's say, is solid foundation, road base, material, drywall, or material required, which is good. Uh, but what I was gonna say is, um.
Yes, with blended ones, right, you get around the property.
Um, I don't see anything in here that says that these cargo containers need to be stationary on the ground. I guess, how do we, how do we prevent somebody from bringing a fifty-three-foot semi-trailer still on its axles? And just parking in their yard and saying, oh, it's my storage container. I think that's beyond, because those are the ones that always look like total crap. The landing gear's sitting in the bar, and the, the wheels are all flat, and the rims are rusted, it's like, if you wanna do it, make it look like a, a, a structure, not a abandoned trailer.
How do you stop that? How do you, you, how do you, you try to? Stop everybody from doing exactly what you wanna do, you know?
But maybe there's a place up in, uh, uh, my deform garage, they sell the Penske truck boxes. But they sell it already removed from the truck, and they deliver it, they put it to your house. Yeah, so I would say, I mean, storage container must be, you know.
Sit on the ground.
It's similarly on the ground, you know, or something of that nature, must not be, I think they've put it there, must not be a trailer on the axles, I don't know, I mean. I think if you got, you know, if you got five or ten acres, and you have a big forty, fifty, sixty-foot pull mower, and you wanna put a fifty-three-foot container on the ground next to it, whatever, but it shouldn't be a trailer, because like, it's, it's ready to go, and, and ready to pull out, so it's, we're gonna inflate all the flat tires. Okay. Anything else on that? Alright, um, so that's new, new business. Uh, where are the report for the committees? Uh, that brings us to the plan update.
Well, we know last week, we talked about scheduling a training session in December. So we know last week, we talked about having a training session in September or October, and it's been back.
Joe's got it.
Date would be best, but as I'm, the, the theme of the workshop is gonna be, you know, how to handle, uh, tricky situations for refugees. Um, and I asked the town chief attorney, you know, if you could, how are your clients, you know, is there one specific area of meetings that you wish that we know about cheap or cheaply, um, uh, public comment period? You know, it's, it's hard for all of me to be seen in bullet. Um, but it's very certain things about, uh, planning mission meetings that you wish you had more confidence on, or just more knowledge of our con, why would you think certain way, um, like, we.
They go a little more structured. Huh? They do a little more structured, and things and stuff, and, you know, I guess that means, of course.
I think like today, it was, because we have a very small crowd, and they closed the gap, so it was easier to bot stuff off each other. You know what I mean? Because you feel like you're wasting their time, and we're trying to figure stuff out. But we can't do it outside of public, because that's not right either. So we have to just understanding that we're not wasting their time, even though we're gathering on and on, and trying to figure it out, because none of us are college-educated in this world learning as we go from you, you know? So how to handle those conversations there.
One of the tricky things, and I would like to know more about, is, like, we can bounce things off of Brenda, because she works in the office, but anyone else is not allowed to stand up and talk outside of citizens' comments, unless we address them specifically, right?
Yeah.
Well, in, in, by rights, I think, I don't think we're really supposed to.
Talk to Brenda, yeah.
I believe that Brenda's not as much as we do. In, in, in such an informal way, I think there, there is a defined structure for all that, but, um, that, uh, plan commission thing that you and I went to a couple of months ago, or weeks ago, whatever, I think there was some very good topics in there, that unfortunately, they just did not give themselves enough time to go through. So I think, uh, it's probably beneficial for the entire group, maybe for you and I to go through that book, and maybe highlight a couple of, of things. I think there's a lot of, um, uh, what do you wanna call it, maybe areas of what we do that, you know, there was a slide for, and they just blew through it so quick, so we could probably go through that, and identify three or four slides that identify certain issues or, or things of that nature, and then maybe send that off over to Karen, say, hey, here's some, here's some key points that I feel I would like to know more about, but we just didn't get that from that, and that'd be helpful to everybody.
Yeah.
And when we were talking, like, when we were going through our last, um, meetings with a couple incidents, especially that happen and stuff, I called Gina. And Gina, sorry.
Will you call Gina?
And you'd stated that she's there for us to call, and I don't think everybody realizes that, I don't think everybody on the zoning board realizes that. To bounce our questions off of beforehand, over reading through this, that, oh, we don't understand it, we don't have to hold all our questions till here. Like, when I call her, I was like, everyone's sorry about it, and she's like, no, that's what I'm here for, you know, and I'm like, I didn't realize that. We could just call, you know, and we wanna call you every day, but that, you know, we're able to do that, and have our questions answered before we even there, so we have a better understanding of what we do here.
Yeah, so I didn't realize that, so you could bounce back and forth, but you just not.
If you have questions, if you're confused about something with an application, you know, if, um, or a site plan, or, you know, I'm trying to figure out, you know, something, like, you, you know, included, it's part of my, it's included with the year, it is, uh, or members of staff in contact with you. So I will give you my contact information, you can get a little rundown, but, um, you know, as planning commission, you know, we're trying to be as prepared as we can, and obviously, you guys can't communicate amongst each other, it's hard to be, but if you have questions, like, it's fine, we really, we'll be there.
Uh, right, you're on, grab, Joe, let him know. Do you have any, so, I don't know, it's up to my ear tones, Joe kind of mentioned to me before, or when we first walked in, he has a vague time picked off for that, he said he was gonna address us. Is there anything else, uh, from the plan update?
We don't have time for it. Yeah, we could call you.
You can call the plan, but you can call me Monday through Friday from nine to three, I'm getting there. Okay, we're good.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, we decided to go next month for the training, so what we'll do, we'll have a regular planning commission meeting, and then, right after that's done, it's still gonna be an open meeting, we'll have the training session for it. Um, Karen, for the, um, are you gonna utilize the P B for that?
I'll try, um, I, of course, I have my voice, so I don't know if it's gonna stink up, but, um, I, I wanted to just grab for you guys, and I'm gonna make a slideshow, I don't know if there's the USB I can plug in to it on, or if I, uh, connected my laptop, I'll make sure I figure it out.
Okay, if not, we can put it over my laptop.
Okay, then I'll probably just land on, bring in USB, and be able to.
Okay, any additional tables for the zoning board appeal, and board, or trustee number two? It's very important that each and every one of you attend this training, okay? This is not an easy job, as you guys know, some of them who've been on it longer, like Jim had, and some are new, and want to build. Um, but the more training we can get through, the more seasoned, and you're gonna become a better planning commissioner, knowing what to look for, and what Karen has planned for her training, when certain situations, you'll know how to respond. Where else have they known the queue in there? Um, I said this last month, and I highly encourage it, look at the June meeting, like, mission, take a look at it, okay? I think that'll help me out immensely. So, uh, any questions on these, I'll fire. Okay, Gina taught you about the church for a baby now, too. Yeah, that's something that's been planned for a long, long time, so. Okay, um, thank you for your service, Conway Township. Thank you, Joe, for your work.
Uh, any other specific comments this evening?
Oh, I'm just gonna make a comment, uh, just, I caution everybody, everybody here is pretty young. I've lived here for a long time, or up here. Um, all of you probably moved in, I grew up here, you probably all came from somewhere else. So my concern, as I, you discussed, the things about the commercial, I mean, the businesses, whatever, much department, which department, it's like, I have a real concern for residential versus what, to me, starts to look on, or opening it up to commercialization, and we're losing the residential, we're losing insight, the residential neighborhood culture. So I mean, that's just a personal comment, and it's like, you know, I see, I've seen the change in buildings years, and now it just seems to be, all of a sudden, well, you know, we wanna give them the opportunity to commit into a business here, I'm like, well, then, why don't, they work in a commercial part, why did they come to a residential part to have a business? So that, this is just, sure, my mind is a personal comment, that's all. You guys are very common, but I'm a lot.
Thank you. And, 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 you know, I'll speak to my, uh, opinion on that, I, I think you're right, and, you know, we have to, as a board, we have to do what we can to try and keep the feel of this community the way it is. Uh, but I also think that there's a lot of people that are coming to this community, and helping to grow and build this community, into what it's gonna be in the future, and a lot of those people wanna get away from the city, but they don't, they're not in a position where they're, they're looking for a, a commercial real estate, you know, piece of commercial real estate, you know, they're, they're small, mom, pop kind of people that have a small business, and they want a little bit of space to be able to do that, and I think sometimes we have to be careful that, you know, we just don't say, no, that everybody that wants to come out to this area for those reasons, so we gotta find a balance.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And I think it's part of it, too, like, from the people that I know that are out here and do have businesses, it's the dream to own twenty acres. If you look at the price of that twenty acres, when my parents might have bought it, or compared to where we could buy it, it's insurmountable for most people my age, or younger, in their forties. So it's the, the ability, it's like, look, I can have, you know, my county business, and I can do it in, I can buy the bigger house, twenty acres of farm, and maybe grow something, and do my county here, and I don't have to pay rent. So they're trying to make that happen, and have a bit of paradise, and still, but balancing that with the residential community is important.
Well, I understand that for something like county, air dress, and I get a little more concerned when I hear the thing, well, you know, we can park a semi and a trailer. I get a little more concerned about the semi and the trailer, uh, in, in the, you know, that kind of thing. And, oh, well, we can do it in two acres or more, two acres is not all, I mean, you start looking at something bigger, five or more. You know, redoing those things, I mean, that's all.
Yes.
Again, that's something I want to say, it's, yeah, should we find this thing?
I agree, yeah, I'm just, there's, uh, I don't think it's, I don't think it's one of those.
No, two acres is small.
Two acres is small.
Yeah.
Ten acres isn't that big? Forty acres? Need more, need more. I should find.
Now, I'm, I'm, I'm.
And if there's anything else to say, I will, uh, make a number, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight thirty.
I will second that motion.
The motion is second for adjournment tonight, on favor of sixty-five, I say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Have a good night, folks.